I’m going to call tonight’s meeting to order. I’ll rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now can we have some roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Waal.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
And Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Ending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you very much. Do we have any late changes to the agenda?
No, we don’t, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next is public comment. Do we have any anyone signed up?
And prior to public comment, I’ll just make our announcement about public comment. No person shall make any personal attacks or threatening remarks while addressing the council, which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person who is engaging in conduct that disturbs, disrupts, or impedes the business of the council, or whose comments have been ruled out of order by the presiding officer, shall immediately cease and refrain from further improper comments or inappropriate conduct. All hate speech will be construed as threatening remarks. Thank you.
First up is William Page. You’ll have five minutes to speak at the podium. And if you could just state your name again and your city of residence, please.
Who is it on?
William Page, and I live right here in Mount Lake City. Mount Lake City. Mount Lake Terrace. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Mount Lake Terrace City Council, Deputy Center Manager, as well as our city clerk, to the Honorable Dr. Stephen Woodard, Councilmember of the City of Mount Lake Terrace City Council, Vice President of Community Engagement and Volunteers of America of Western Washington. Now, what my speech says is, right now, I’m at a basketball game with the Kellogg Middle School girls, and I’m sorry I can’t be here in person, but I made it. But I conferred with two of your closest friends, Donnie Griffin and Wally Webster. And this is what we would like to say in your behalf. Steve Woodard is a smart, witty, intelligent, and compassionate man. They don’t make many like him anymore. In addition to being a dedicated husband and father, he cares deeply about the well-being of his neighbors, his communities, and his friends, of which I am happy to be among. As an educator, a community service nonprofit executive, and a locally elected city council member, he gives himself fully and completely to making our surroundings world free of hatred, injustice, and poverty. Service is his calling. Steve serves on several social justice-focused boards of trust, directors, and trustees in the region. Steve is a servant leader to many organizations outside of VOAWW. Here are a few of those. He’s a trustee, Foundation for the Edmonds School District. He’s secretary and board member of Association for Collective Community Engagement on Safety and Security, the Access Project. He’s a board member of Lift Every Voice Legacy. He’s an advisory board member of the Teacher Education Advancement Program of the Edmonds School District. He’s a civic design team member of the Washington State Family and Community Engagement Trust. He’s a member of Snohomish County African American Black Heritage Committee. He’s a former dean of students at Edmonds College. Dr. Woodard is an individual who has deep passion and unwavering commitment to serving those who need our help the most. He showed his commitment while at Edmonds College, and now he brings the same passion to his new role at VOAWW. Steve was honored by the Snohomish County Black Heritage Committee as one of their highly esteemed leaders, and was honored at their Roots, Stems, and Roses Red and White banquet on April 29th last year. Dr. Woodard is a sought-after speaker and emcee, and has given his voice and leadership to many of the most prominent events in Snohomish County, such as the Step Up to Action conferences, as well as this year. However, Steve’s most meaningful responsibility is, he’s a husband and father of two children. Personally, my life is better because I know him. I know many others would say the same. I am delighted to shine a light on him and his good works during Black History Month. Thank you, Steve, for you just being you.
Next is Lee Gresko. You’ll have five minutes. If you’ll please state your name again and the city of residence.
Lee Gresko, Mount Lake Terrace. Good evening, all of you. And what he said. That was amazing. Yeah. And Steve Woodard. I live in the area that is just west of the Studio Six Hotel, our favorite place in the world. And the street, 242nd and 60th, right where that street turns, and it’s the dead end, there’s a strip of grass that’s just opposite a couple of homes. It’s on the south side of the street. And for the past four or five years, I think, it could be longer, but I think it was at least when we had our Gateway Neighborhood Group going on, and we were having a lot of thefts and stuff. So that that strip of grass, and weeds, and garbage, doesn’t seem to belong to anybody. We don’t know who owns it. I don’t live right there, but I was the captain of our group. So whenever there’s been a pile of garbage, or some extra chairs out there, or flats of cardboard, or whatever, code enforcement, I believe they checked on it at one time. And who owns it is the people who own the property, where the drugstore is, and Jean Juarez, all those stores down there. But they couldn’t get to it if they tried, because there’s a fence, and they maybe don’t even know they own it. So my request has been, over and over again, that there be a garbage can. But it’s such a trivial thing compared to important things going on here. But it’s just a place where people throw stuff, and when people pull up and park at the curb, and, you know, stay there for however long, they dump a lot of really nasty stuff there. So if a garbage can can be put there by the city, that would be wonderful. Someplace right around that corner. The Studio Six is just on the other side of the fence, another fence, and that Studio Six right off Van Ryde Boulevard. So that’s my request. Public Works, Mr. Nye, has been the person who I’ve called several times a year for the past five or six years, and asked if somebody could come out there and just clean it up. And he has accommodated that request numerous times. But it’s not a sustainable thing to do, and I’m getting too old to follow that garbage around, and he’s probably going to retire someday, and we don’t know who’s going to do it then. So I ask the city, consider some sort of a waste container in that corner. Thank you.
You’ll have five minutes at the podium. If you could state your name and city of residence, please.
My name is Paula Guyen. I live at 23303-58th Avenue, just right across the street at the Plaza. I’ve been there six years, and I love it. My request is, if we do a zoning change, will the Zipcar get to come to Mount Lake Terrace? That’s my request. Thank you.
You’ll have five minutes at the podium. If you could state your name and your city of residence, please.
Dale Jeremiah, Mount Lake Terrace. We’re very fortunate in Mount Lake Terrace, at our recreation pavilion, to have a senior exercise program called Silver Sneakers. Now, that’s a nationally renowned program that is covered by insurance companies, that if a fitness center offers that, they’ll pay the premium, or the membership for that senior, for that physical fitness center. But I also noticed, in the Edmonds Waterfront Center, they don’t offer that. So I’m hoping after our lease is approved tonight, that there’ll be some coordination with our recreation pavilion and the Edmonds Waterfront Center. So but I’m concerned, there’s a provision in the lease that says you’ll only have a rate structure for resident and non-resident members, or not members, but that’s the fee structure for programs. But if we have that provision, that eliminates the Edmonds Waterfront Center from offering a membership. And even on their membership application, it says that grants are critical, membership is critical for grants. So if they can’t offer a membership, they can’t get any grants. It’s no different than, you know, why do you join Costco or Amazon Prime? There’s a benefit to a membership, and that’s a lower fee for members. So that’s in paragraph 5.2 or 3. Please eliminate any language about member or resident and non-resident fee structure. It’s just going to create them a cannonball, I’m sure everybody, you could have a, anyway. Hopefully, that needs to be corrected, because we don’t want to, we want this senior center at Ballenger to succeed. Thank you.
Last on the list is Victor. I’m not sure how to say your last name. If you could state your first and last name and your city of residence, please. And you’ll have five minutes. Thank you.
Victor Eskenazi, and I reside in Mount Lake Terrace. And I’m not sure if my, what I’m pushing for is opposed to what Dale’s pushing for, and if it is, I’m sorry about that. But, and it’s not meant to be. I am for the, would like to go ahead with that agreement with the, between Mickey Corso, the Lake Ballenger Center, whatever you want to call it, and the Edmonds Waterfront Center, Senior Center there. However, the concern is that to allow Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center, or which, the organ, the people that run it, to allow them to have, maintain their autonomy, and if something comes, so like if, so if there is something that comes down to one or the other, that they don’t lose out to because of Edmonds Waterfront Center, that they’re allowed to go on with their programs as they wish. That’s it.
That’s all we have for public comment.
Okay. Well, in the past, we asked if anybody in the audience who didn’t sign up wanted to. Are we still allowed to do that? I know we’re not doing any online.
Yeah. If there’s anyone in the audience, is there anyone who didn’t sign up that would like to speak?
Okay. All right.
That’s the end of public comment, then.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next is our consent calendar, excuse me, consent calendar. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar, items A, B, and C.
Second. So it’s moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I was looking at you. All opposed. Submotion carries. Next is a very, very special proclamation for Black History Month. And I’m going to read the proclamation and present it to Dr. Woodard. Are we doing it up here or down there?
Usually, we do it down here.
Okay.
And family and friends, you’re welcome to come up and see a picture or a video, if you wish. I can also grab your hand, if you’d like.
Okay.
Should I just go over here, then? Yep, wherever you feel comfortable.
You want to send a shot, though, right?
Yeah. Well, if you’re comfortable being, it’s fine. I’m Councilmember Woodard. All right. Let me make sure I can get everybody. Make sure you can see me, so that nobody’s face is blocked. That works? I’m good. That’s fine.
Great. I’m so glad to see this group up here. All right. Black History Month, February. Whereas, each year, Black History Month is observed nationally in February, and in 2022, the City of Mount Lake Terrace has added this observation, observance, to its calendar as recommended by the city’s Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. And whereas, the origins of Black History Month date back to 1915, as a result of the interest in the national celebration of the 50th anniversary of emancipation, where attendees learned about the progress of their people since the destruction of slavery, and when Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the organization known today as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas, Black History Month also celebrates the achievements and contributions that the African Americans have made in shaping our society, our country, and our local communities, including the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And whereas, observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African American history, and acknowledge the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom, and embracing our differences, makes our city stronger as we work together for the benefit of all. And whereas, each year, the Association for the Study of African American Life and History sets a theme for Black History Month, and the 2024 theme is African Americans and the Arts, spanning the many impacts Black Americans have had on visual arts, music, cultural movement, and more. And whereas, to participate in observing Black History Month, the Mount Lake Terrace community is encouraged to visit www.asahl.org to learn more about the origins of the event, this year’s theme, African American history, and special events, including a virtual festival. Now, therefore, I, Kioko Matsumoto Wright, Mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in the City of Mount Lake Terrace, and encourage our community to join in, celebrating the great contributions of the Black, of Black, Black Americans to our city, state, and nation. Signed by me, the mayor, this first day of February 2024, at the City of Mount Lake Terrace, State of Washington. And we’re going to present it to our council member, Dr. Steve Woodard.
Everybody take one step forward. Beautiful. Okay. Beautiful. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So our next proclamation is for Lunar New Year. And do we have to go back down there? Yes, we do, I guess.
Yes. Okay.
Sure.
Since I’m going to need to see. All right. So, whereas, the Lunar New Year, also known as Tet in the Vietnamese culture, one of the biggest holidays in the many East Asian cultures, and is celebrated by billions of people around the world and in the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And whereas, the city is home to many community members to celebrate Lunar New Year, including Vietnamese, Chinese, and Korean. And whereas, Lunar New Year is a cultural celebration, celebrating the first new moon of a lunar calendar year. It is also the onset of spring in many regions of the world where the celebration is originated. So it is a time to mark the beginning of a new planting season. And whereas, there are many ways in which Lunar New Year is celebrated among the various cultures. Many people begin with spring cleaning prior to the holiday, and there are family gatherings with symbolic foods that represent health and longevity, prosperity, family togetherness, happiness, and progress. There are often festivals, dragon dancing, decorations reflecting spring and prosperity, and gifting of lucky money to children. And whereas, the city values the diversity of our community, and encourages all community members to learn about each other’s traditions and cultures, to expand our understanding of one another. And now, therefore, on behalf of Kioko Matsumoto Wright, Mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, we do hereby proclaim February 10 through 24, 20, 10 through 24, 2024, as Lunar New Year in the City of Mount Lake Terrace, and encourage our community to join us in celebrating this holiday. Signed by the mayor, this first day of February 2024, at the City of Mount Lake Terrace, State of Washington, and witness whereof, and the seal and signatures of the city are fixed.
I am accepting this for the citizens of the city who have a background in Chinese, Vietnamese, and so forth, because the Japanese celebrate New Years on 1st of January. We’re going to be having proclamations every month, I hope. Next is the, we’re going to hear about the amendment for the zoning text for the private recreational facilities, with the presentation first by Associate Planner Sarah Pizzo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Pizzo. I’m an associate planner here, and I’ll be going over a zoning text amendment proposal. All right. So first, I’m going to go over some background information, and then provide more detailed information about the proposal. I’ll go over SEPA, Department of Commerce, and written public comments. I’ll talk about how the comprehensive plan, zoning, and land uses relate to this request. I’ll talk about some comparison cities that staff looked at while doing the review of this proposal. And then discuss the actual zoning text that’s proposed to change, and then present Planning Commission and staff recommendation. All right. So some background information about zoning text amendments. Zoning text amendment is another way to say a change to the zoning code. They’re not site or project specific. They can be changed, the zoning text can be changed at any time, as long as the change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And this is a legislative decision. Planning Commission is required, and did hold a public hearing, and has provided a recommendation to city council, and city council is required to hold a public hearing as well, which is happening tonight. So the process thus far, we received a zoning text amendment application last summer from Forest Crest Athletic Club. We, staff, reviewed the SEPA and issued a determination of nonsignificance in October of last year. Staff sent the proposal to the Department of Commerce, and that comment period ended early December. No comments were received. Planning Commission held two work sessions on the proposal, and two public hearings early, yeah, in December and in January. We had the city council work session last week, and today, as I stated, is the public hearing. All right. So the proposal, the applicant is Forest Crest Athletic Club. They do have a non-conforming use and structures and improvements on their property. However, it is important to remember that zoning text amendments are not site-specific. So what’s being reviewed would apply to all single household residential properties. The proposal is to allow privately owned recreation facilities in our residential zoning districts, as long as specific criteria is met and a conditional use permit is obtained. Per Planning Commission direction, staff and the applicant worked together to revise the original proposal, so that we could address concerns to adequately mitigate any impacts that private rec facilities may have on neighboring residences. And so the proposal I’m presenting today is kind of the final product of the work of Planning Commission staff and the applicant. All right. So the revised proposal includes updates to the following code sections. 1915-190, definitions, the letter R. 1923-50, development standards, uses, recreation, and transportation land uses. 19130-210, street frontage and parking lot perimeter landscape development. 19130-230, perimeter landscaping on interior lot lines, buffering requirements. 19125-20, location, specific to parking. 19135-60, specific standards for wall signs. 1930-75, it’s a new section within our residential zoning code that provides criteria for private recreation facilities, conditional use permits. All right. So this is a map visual that shows the four properties that would currently meet all the criteria to cite a privately owned recreation facility today. However, one is actually city-owned property within Terrace Creek Park, and is required to be preserved open space, so that would not be a feasible location to build a private rec facility. rec facility. And then, a little bit south on 46th Avenue West, contains a lot of critical areas, so that's our environmentally sensitive area, and so it'd be really difficult to build a rec facility there. So there's really two properties in the city that would be eligible with the proposed criteria. One of them is the applicant's property, Forest Crest Athletic Club. All right, so now getting into environmental review, Department of Commerce, and public comment. So as I stated, a determination of nonsignificance was issued at the end of October last year, and no agency or public comments were received on the environmental checklist. The Department of Commerce did not have any comments either. All right, the city received, as of January 25th, 32 public comments on this proposal. All of them are in support of Forest Crest Athletic Club and the proposed text amendment that will allow them to upgrade their facilities. And here's an image of the Forest Crest Athletic Club from Google Street View. All right, the comprehensive plan, zoning, and land uses. These are the high-level takeaways that relate to this proposal. So we looked at the land use element, recreation element, housing, and economic development. So the comp plan states that we need to have diverse and robust recreation opportunities to meet the growing demand in Mount Lake Terrace. One way to do so would be to partner with other organizations. Also, urban low residential land uses in RS zones are primarily for single household land uses. Complementary uses are allowed by our zoning code but not defined. The city is required to provide housing for population growth projections. Business investment and retention is important for economic development, and development should be compatible with surrounding land uses. Okay, comparison cities. So staff looked at Edmonds, Linwood, and Shoreline to see if their codes allowed private recreational uses in single household zones, and if they did, what criteria was required. So Edmonds and Linwood do not allow recreation facilities in their single household zones, so there's no criteria to review. However, Shoreline does allow sports clubs within their single household zones with a conditional use permit. And then, as you know, Mount Lake Terrace does not currently allow privately owned recreation facilities. We do allow publicly owned recreation facilities. And then the proposal would be to allow private facilities with a conditional use permit, which is similar to Shoreline. So for Shoreline, we did look at the criteria that's required, and they have general requirements for lighting, parking, signage, but it applies to all zones, and there weren't specific criteria for sports clubs in our, or in their single household zones. So that's all kind of worked out through their conditional use process. In Mount Lake Terrace, what's proposed is also our general requirements that relate to parking, landscaping, lighting will apply, but we're also adding, proposing to add specific criteria for private recreation facilities that would be reviewed through the conditional use permit and help kind of guide that process. All right, so details about the proposed text amendment. All right, in 1915-190, that's the definition section, we would be adding a definition for private recreation facilities and public recreation facilities so that we can distinguish the two, which sets up the rest of the code amendment. 1923-50, this is pertaining to uses, which would keep public rec facilities in RS zones as a permitted use and allow private rec facilities as a conditional use. And then there's also the condition that they must be within 500 feet of an arterial as designated in our transportation master plan. And then 19130-210, street frontage and parking lot perimeter landscape development. We're proposing adding private recreation facilities to be consistent with our current code language for suggested perimeter landscaping along street frontage. Sorry. Yeah, so that it's consistent with what we require for public recreation facilities. 19130-210, perimeter landscaping on interior lot lines, these are buffering requirements. Currently, we require a type 3 landscaping, 10 feet in width on interior property lines, and for schools, religious facilities, we would keep this requirement, but we would add that for private rec facilities, we have stronger screening when they're adjacent to residential zones, and then the type 3 when they're adjacent to rec zones, which are more similar. And type 3 is a visual buffer, and type 5 is solid screening, so that's a bit more of a buffer. 19125-20, location, so we would require that off-street parking is located on the lot or building that the facilities serve, and public parking cannot count towards parking requirements. And, yeah. All right, 19130-60, this is our wall sign requirements. So we're proposing keeping what we have but adding private rec facilities to be consistent with what we allow for religious facilities and schools in residential zones. Okay. 1930-75 is a new proposed section, so we're proposing that rec facilities have hours of operation for outdoor activities that mirror our nuisance code for what's considered nighttime hours. Currently, that's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Outdoor recreation facility lighting should be turned off also during those nighttime hours. Light fixture height maximums should be determined based on the recreational use and addressed through the conditional use process. Since the light fixture heights might vary depending on the type of recreational use, we didn't want to be too prescriptive, but we didn't want that detail to be kind of forgotten in the review process, and so we made a point to include it here. All lights provided to illuminate parking areas, buildings, facilities need to be arranged so that light is not spilling over into adjacent properties, and that's consistent with a code requirement we already have, 19120-30, but again, wanted to call it out here. Okay. Fences must comply with our current code in 19120-200. We are adding here that the first 12 feet in height, so from the ground up to 12 feet, a fencing should be site obscuring. This could be chain link fencing with slats, mesh, et cetera. Traffic impact analysis will be required each time a private recreation facility is proposed in a single household zone as part of that conditional use permit review. A minimum of one off-street loading/unloading space must be provided and subject to our code for loading and unloading, 19125-80. On interior and through lots, side yards can provide off-street parking, and on corner lots, the rear yard may be used. The front yard cannot be used for off-street parking. All structures should be stepped back 20 feet from property lines, and this is consistent with what we allow for non-residential uses that we currently allow in our residential zones, like religious facilities. Buildings associated with private rec facilities shall not exceed 35 feet in height, and this is consistent with what, pretty consistent with what we require for our RS zone. The minimum lot area required to locate a private rec facility in an RS zone is between 1.5 acres and 3 acres, and the goal with this was try to kind of scale the facilities so that it's appropriate with the surrounding residential land uses. For private recreation facilities in the RS 8400, 7200, and 4800 zones, the minimum lot coverage required will be 45%, and this is pretty consistent with what we require in those zones currently. And then in RST zone, we would match the requirement there, which I believe is 60%. And then private recreation facility uses must not exceed 75% impervious surface coverage, and this was consistent with what Shoreline requires in those zones. Right, so Planning Commission recommends approval to city council based on the following. So they found that private recreation facilities may be compatible in RS zones if criteria for approval adequately mitigates adverse impacts to adjacent and surrounding properties. The criteria that I just presented to approve private rec facilities in RS zones does address compatibility with adjacent and surrounding residential land uses. The staff also recommends that the council approve this proposal in alignment with the Planning Commission recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is a public hearing, and I'm going to, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. City Clerk, has there been any written comments on this matter, or anyone signed up to speak?
Written comments have already been submitted to you. We do have people signed up to speak. So the first one is James Freeman. You'll have five minutes. If you could state your name and area of residence, please.
Good evening. My name is James Freeman, and I'm actually an Edmonds resident, but I'm here tonight representing Ace Out Hunger, which is a Mount Lake Terrace-based nonprofit organization. Ace Out Hunger works in conjunction with Bashah Tennis, and we hold annual tennis-related food drive events at the Forest Crest Athletic Club. The non-perishable food goods collected by those events are typically given to Concern for Neighbors, which I'm pretty sure you guys probably all know is that Mount Lake Terrace's local food bank. So just sort of in a nutshell, Ace Out Hunger wants to lend its support for this proposal, which will enable us to continue doing our food drive events. And one of the things that I kind of want to point out is by allowing us to host our events at the Forest Crest Athletic Club facilities, Forest Crest Athletic Club is actually, you know, providing a relatively unnoticed beneficial contribution to the Mount Lake Terrace community, and we'd like to see that continue. Anyway, thanks for your consideration.
Next is Thomas Anderson. If you could state your name, area of residence, five minutes to speak.
Thomas Anderson, Mount Lake Terrace. Mayor Wright and Mayor Protem and members of the council, I'd like to thank you for considering our application for a zoning text amendment. As some of you may know, we have been here in the past with multiple applications for rezoning our property to recreation along with plans for expansions that were probably just too big. We are a small neighborhood tennis club, and we intend to stay that way. We just would like to be able to make improvements to include a new clubhouse. The existing clubhouse is a concrete block structure with seven-foot ceilings that was built in the 60s, and to service three outdoor tennis courts and a swimming pool. And we would like to reconfigure and make new our outdoor tennis and racket, or excuse me, pickleball courts. We have submitted a zoning text amendment to allow private recreational facilities in residential zoned areas, written with criteria that we feel addresses any concerns or impacts that might arise. This would allow us to rebuild our clubhouse and rearrange our outdoor courts. We worked with the planning staff to address concerns that they and the Planning Commission had, and were able to get staff approval and a Planning Commission vote to recommend approval. We are extremely grateful to both. With the growth Mount Lake Terrace has already experienced and with more growth coming, we feel we are providing additional recreational opportunities to our residents, and we'd like to continue doing so in a facility that we and the residents of Mount Lake Terrace can be proud of. We are the only indoor tennis facility in Mount Lake Terrace, and because of the expense of buying raw land and building new facilities, we might be the only one for quite a while. Tennis and pickleball are not big moneymakers. As I mentioned, with approval of this amendment, we will be able to rebuild our clubhouse and move around our outdoor tennis and pickleball courts. This consolidation will free up land for some additional residential building lots. For those of you who are not aware, Forest Crest has developed properties adjacent to the club for the last four years and built 11 beautiful new homes. We currently have a project submitted to the planning department for three more homes, and we'll be able to proceed with five more if our amendment is approved. This club development and adjacent housing development will also result in approximately 500 lineal feet of sidewalk street frontage improvements vastly improving walkability in the area. Obviously, this amendment will allow someone else to come along, provided they meet the criteria and provide some other type of recreation. As a longtime resident of Mount Lake Terrace, I look forward to whatever that might be. I've provided you with copies of some overhead site plans, one showing existing buildings and courts, and one with the rendering showing our plans for the club and additional single-family homes. I hope you think it looks as good as we do. I have also included photos of the houses that we have built. Most importantly are the photos on the last 11 of pages. They show what we do and the joy that it provides. Councilmember Sonmore, am I pronouncing your name right? You had asked at the work meeting kind of how Forest Crest got to where we are, and so just a brief history of Forest Crest, I'll make it short. Russ Buckman bought the property in the mid to late 70s. It was a pool and tennis club with three outdoor tennis courts and two pools, swimming pool and a wading pool. At this time, private recreation was allowed in residential zoned areas. He put up a steel building to cover the existing tennis courts and added three new outdoor tennis courts and two pickleball courts, and then in the mid 80s started planning for a new clubhouse and additional tennis courts. Sometime in late 1986 or 87, the city changed the code where recreation was only allowed if it was publicly owned, and that's kind of how we got to where we are now, because at that point, all the development stopped, and we've been trying to improve the club ever since. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much. Thanks again for considering our proposal.
Next is Josh Bashah. You'll have five minutes. If you could state your name and area of residence, please.
Hi, my name's Josh Bashah. I'm from Mount Lake Terrace, and I'm the Director of Tennis at Forest Crest Athletic Club. There's a lot been said about Forest Crest being a private club. We are a private club with membership. We are by no means exclusive in any way. Non-members can join member reservations if they're invited, attend group lessons, take private lessons, play on teams, get racket strong, attend socials, and we also have outdoor pickleball courts that are free to the public. Come use at any time. As a Director of Tennis, I've been here since fall of 2013. When Russ Buckman offered me the position, he did so with an emphasis on giving back to the community, making Forest Crest part of Mount Lake Terrace and embracing the culture. Since then, we've been part of Cheeseburger Babies, we've been part of the Trunk or Treat Halloween activities, we've been part of the July 3rd, it's more of a July 4th event, but it's on July 3rd. We have partnered with Ace Out Hunger, Raising Food for Concern for Neighbors. Since the COVID release, we've raised over 2,500 pounds of food for the hungry in Mount Lake Terrace. A food bank ratio is one and a half pounds of food raised is one meal, so that's over 1,650 meals. We volunteer coaching for Mount Lake Terrace High School tennis programs. We donate indoor court time for high school programs when they're rained out. We also sponsor the West Coast websites, and we donate to school boosters for Mount Lake Terrace, Sherwood, Shorecrest, and Shorecrest High Schools. Pre-COVID, we volunteered at elementary schools to teach Pre-COVID, we volunteered at elementary schools to teach tennis and PE classes. We provide volunteer opportunity hours for students, and we give scholarships to students that can't afford tennis lessons. We also play a role in local, national, and international tennis communities. We host on average 90 USTA teams a year. That's roughly 1,300 players that compete out of Forest Crest against other local clubs. Last year, one of our teams won the national championships, while another team finished second in the national championships. We host United States Professional Test Association certification for future coaches in the Pacific Northwest. 2021 through 2023, I was the head tester for the Pacific Northwest out of Mount Lake Terrace. In 2023, I was selected to be the captain and one of four players for the USA Men's 30-and-over team in Turkey. It was actually close to the earthquake. It was an interesting time. Two other players on that team are also non-members of Forest Crest that regularly train out of Forest Crest. What that means is three of the top four men in 30-and-over tennis in the country represented and were from Forest Crest. We actually got second. We lost to the Germans in the finals. That was a pretty special moment to have three guys from Seattle represent. We are proud to bring Mount Lake Terrace with us to these national events. At Forest Crest, we donate, support, and volunteer to help our local community in many different ways. We take pride in our community. We are motivated by the growth and the success of Mount Lake Terrace. Please work with us to help Mount Lake Terrace be the special community every new resident wants to be part of. Thank you.
Next is Alan Regala. If you'll state your name and area of residence, please. You'll have five minutes.
My name is Alan Regala. I live in Seattle, and I am one of the other members of the team that Josh was just talking about. The pleasure of living in Seattle and not being a member of Forest Crest and having played out of there for several years, playing on multiple teams. And as Josh said, I was fortunate enough to be selected to be on the US National Team for the Men's 30s. And as Josh mentioned, we had a, it was really, really fun representing our country and having three of us from the Seattle area, you know, representing us, representing the country. And it's just a fantastic place, even though I don't live in Mount Lake Terrace, it's a fantastic place for me to train and, you know, look forward to, you know, having a, being able to continue training there and, you know, hopefully in a upgraded facility. That's all.
Next is Anita. And I'll let you state your full name, area of residence, and five minutes.
Anita Marrero-Winville. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I am a land use planner by profession and a member of the Forest Crest Athletic Club. First, I would like to commend the Planning Department and the Planning Commission for all their hard work on this application. Collaboration with the applicant and city staff through various meetings and consultations was beneficial in submitting a complete application. City staff's memo to City Council effectively addresses how private recreational facilities can be a compatible use in RS zones with a conditional use permit and associated criteria. The revised criteria will make certain that any adverse impacts to the adjacent and surrounding properties will be adequately mitigated. Recreational facilities are greatly needed in the city, and the zoning text amendment will allow Forest Crest Athletic Club to create more recreation opportunities for the community and upgrade the current facility, which is desperately needed. As a member of Forest Crest, I see the multiple benefits of the recreational facility. The tennis club serves all members, including kids, adults, and seniors. Communities are always looking for more recreational opportunities, and to deny this proposal would be detrimental to the community. This proposal meets comprehensive plan policies related to recreation uses and satisfies the need for recreation opportunities as outlined in the Recreation Plans and Open Space Plan, or Parks and Open Space Plan. In conclusion, I am in support of the zoning text amendment for private recreational facilities and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Next is Danny. Again, I'll let you state your full name and area of residence. You have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Daniel Berzovic. I'm a Mount Lake Terrace resident. I'm also the Mount Lake Terrace High School Varsity Tennis Coach. As Josh had previously mentioned, they have definitely participated in providing ample opportunities for my students to be able to play tennis even when they're less than ideal conditions. But that is an understatement. They have also provided resources for students, typically students that have difficulty buying equipment. They've donated shoes. They donated tennis rackets. They've donated tennis balls. Every year, they check in and see what they can provide for those students that have needs so that they can participate and enjoy a sport. I'd like to also point, as a high school educator, that tennis and just sports in general can really provide both a lot of physical health, but also social and emotional support for those students. The amount of mental well-being that these students receive from being able to participate in sports is something that shouldn't be overlooked. Similarly, tennis being very weather-dependent by having a facility close by that allows for year-round tennis for the students that get passionate and involved in tennis, being able to have access to that community and being able to spend time with and make friends and be able to, again, be both healthy physically and mentally is incredibly valuable. And I would like to be able to see these opportunities become, you know, for my students as much as possible. A lot of the times right now, when Forest Crest provides its facilities for our use, it is, again, donated. And many of those times, you know, it's taken away from its normal procedures so that we can be able to have that opportunity for our high school students, something that I deeply appreciate, but would like to be able to do without having to be quite so taxing to this wonderful community. Forest Crest has also provided my students with ample opportunities to volunteer, both for high school requirements as well as learning opportunities to be able to coach and become more involved with the sport that they love, which is, again, something that I would like to see more opportunities from by having a, you know, retrofitted facility. Those opportunities, which currently are limited to only a couple of students, would be able to have more access for more students to become involved, not just in playing the sport, but also giving back and working with teaching and obtaining those volunteer hours that right now are already of great benefit. Forest Crest also, through its training and volunteer coaching hours, has helped many of my students achieve a pretty prestigious goal of playing college tennis, something that I love to see and even receive college scholarships to continue their education and their tennis career. And that's something right now that, again, would only have more opportunities to be able to do so with the amendments being proposed. So I would, again, like to thank everything that Forest Crest has done for my students and my community, and I am in full support of any thing they can do towards upgrading that facility and keep it operating so that my students can continue to have those opportunities. Thank you.
Last, but not least, Miguel. If you could state your full name and area of residence, you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Miguel Beltran. I live in Seattle. I've been a member of the Forest Crest Athletic Club for about two years, and it's a magnificent place. I just want to support, obviously, this proposal, and I want to highlight that it provides incredible diversity. It's a family-oriented facility, also great friends, and great tennis. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close the public hearing.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. All right, council, do you have... Mayor Protem? You have any questions?
No.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions before we go on? All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt the proposed ordinance, which amends Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Code 19150, 192350, 1913210, 1913230, 1912520, 1913560, and adds a new code 193075.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
No discussion.
On all the discussion. Does anyone have any questions, discussions, whatever? Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I just want to say thank you all for being here. Thank you for all the time you have put into this effort, and more importantly, being here to watch it cross the finish line. That said, I also want to be selfish and say, I first thought you were here for me. I was like, oh, oh. Just wanted to make sure you were still out there in good attitude and laughing. Perfect. But no, seriously, I just wanted to let you all know you did have the opportunity to hear something about me, and one of those things was I'm on a board called Lift Every Voice Legacy, which you might not have known is our founder was in this room. What you might not have known is every year, we do our best to find you, and I apologize for missing you. We do what's called a beloved community award. If you stick around for the next conversation with Daniel here from the Waterfront Center, you'll hear the elements of it there. But nonetheless, everything that you just described is what that award is for, so I just wanted you to know that when we come up for this next year, I have every intention, it's already in my calendar, to make sure that I nominate your organization. You are all absolutely the epitome, as you've described yourself, of the beloved community. And even if you didn't say anything, just the fact that you're all here, that you put up with traffic, that you bypassed dinner, that you let me keep talking to you, it's amazing. All of that is part of a beloved community, and I just want to acknowledge that and let you all know I hope to be able to recognize that very soon.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore.
I'll hold my comment until after we vote. It's just a comment that I want to put out there, but I'll wait until after.
Okay. Anyone else?
Call for the question.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now, Councilmember Sonmore, you wanted to say something?
Yes, I just didn't want to say it prior to the vote, so I didn't look like I was swayed one way or the other. But Danny, I'm so happy that you're here. And I think I told you last time, I was a member of your club. I don't know if we were members back then. It was in the early 70s where I learned how to play tennis, and then Mount Lake Terrace was a three-year school, and I littered in tennis all three years, and now it's come full circle for me. And it really is true what you say. You do change lives benefiting with the food drive. I'm just very proud of what you do and how long you've stayed in the community, so I wish you all the best of luck with your business in the future. And thank you for being coaches, too, and being on a US team. I met you when we were walking through the door and was so impressed. But one of the things that we get that opportunity sitting on council, we don't get it a whole lot, is having so many people in our audience, and it really makes a difference because you took time out of your busy schedules to support something you really believe in. So thank you.
All right, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, before you leave, Sarah, I was gonna say, I feel like, no, 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 no questions, no questions. But I just wanted to, I think, in addition to everyone being here, we made a zoning, you know, change today, and I think one of the reasons, and I said this at our work session, but since we have such a crowd, I want to make sure I say it here, too, and I think we heard that feedback as part of the testimony. Thank you for all of the work that you have done, and thank you to all of the staff for the work that you have done and to the Planning Commission. By the time it got to council to take a look at, a lot of intentional and thoughtful work had been done that made it much easier to get to a place where we were having a unanimous decision here today. So I just want to recognize you and all of the folks that, you know, have been involved in this process for a very long time and more recently to get it to this point.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll go. So I cannot believe that I've been on the council for all of these years, and I've lived in Mount Lake Terrace for over 40 years, and I know about your club, but I did not know all of what you do until today. I think you should toot your horn a little bit more. Let the city know what's going on in your organization so that we can at least say something in our newsletter. I mean, if you're going to be sending people to a national or international, it's not a conference, it's competition, our city should know about it. So if anything that is going to come out of this is that you're going to have better communication with the city, and you're going to get more people knowing about you. And who knows, you may be too full. Hopefully not. But anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you. I don't know if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting. But our next, next thing on our agenda is the review of the lease, review lease agreement with the, for the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse with our Recreation and Parks Director Jeff Betts.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director for the city. And with me also is Daniel Johnson, CEO of the Edmonds Waterfront Center. And we are back. So really just wanted to take the time to go through this via PowerPoint presentation, which I did not do the last couple of times, so hopefully we could be a little more visual as well. So as mentioned, we're reviewing the lease agreement, the proposed lease agreement for the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse. And so tonight, we're going to highlight a few items on the agenda, and there's, we're going to talk about the location, make sure everybody remembers and knows where the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse is, some background information, the lease agreement itself, some comparisons, and the request of council, as well as some any discussion and questions as well. So the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse is located at Ballenger Park, and this is in the southeast, I should say southwest corner of Mount Lake Terrace, and it's located on a 55-acre park property, and it was purchased with state funding in the 1960s. It's that big red star there for anybody who's online, doesn't know where it is. So the clubhouse was constructed in 1989, and that is 8,064 square feet, including the patio. So yeah, smaller without the patio, but that's the total square footage of the facility when constructed. And it was a former golf clubhouse, and it was converted to a senior center in 2013. So the previous lease with the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group was five years plus a one-five-year extension option. And there's a sort of recent photo here within the last couple of weeks, last week, of how busy that parking lot was with services down there currently. So the Washington State Recreation Conservation Office funding that we received a good 70-something years ago, probably, it restricts the use of that center, and because it's on property that was purchased with state funding, to recreation purposes. And senior programming does qualify. We brought the state office out in 2013 and talked to them about the changes from golf to from golf to senior center operations, and it does qualify. And we want to make sure we're in compliance with our grant requirements. That current lease with the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group did expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and it was a one thousand five hundred per month lease agreement. And they served around two hundred and fifty, three hundred members per year. I think that's kind of fluctuated, and that's probably not as high, that probably was not as high during COVID, obviously. But, but really, many, there's thousands of visits between the lunch program and different people who go down to the park that come in to have a cup of coffee and various other interactions that are there that Daniel and could highlight as well. So the, the current status of the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group, and this is something we talked about in the past, you know, for the first six years that they operated the facility, there were some bumps here and there, but they persevered and they hung in there. But the pandemic really, really changed that, as it did for many of us. But it put a huge dent in their membership, as well as their board and their budget. So the, the current contracted arrangement in the, the current Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group is very, very different than it was when we first made this agreement ten years ago. And it's not a sustainable arrangement for them. They have one current employee who was working volunteer, and their entire board is gone. I think there's one board member left from the original group, or is that nobody? No original board members left. So the proposed lease agreement of the clubhouse is a partnership with the Edmonds Waterfront Center, which really has supported the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group to provide programming here in Mount Lake Terrace during COVID. And during some of their, some of the times where they weren't able to provide staffing or programming in those areas, they were really able to kind of prop them up. So this would be, this proposed lease is for a five-year lease and a one, plus a one-five-year extension option, identical to the previous lease. And termination on either side is really just for cause. So if something happened that would, any other landlord would, you know, evict somebody, it's similar to that kind of situation. It's a for-cause type termination situation. The city maintains exterior plumbing, electrical, and major infrastructure, and Edmonds Waterfront Center would maintain interior. There would be, they would maintain tables and chairs and anything else they utilize inside the center. And then, as well as custodial, the city would not be providing that. So also, as I mentioned, or didn't mention, the lease amount for this current, for this proposed lease agreement, I should say, is ten dollars per year. And that would also include, they would owe any leasehold excise taxes that were due. But the agreement also includes a rental forgiveness clause, and currently that's twelve thousand dollars. And that inability to pay rent is directly tied to everything that they have went through with COVID, lost revenues, as well as the Ballenger Park construction. It's taken a really big bite out of their, their wedding times that they're able to rent the room out and then kind of offer that outdoor, indoor, outdoor wedding feel, which everybody wants down there. It's really kind of the larger appeal to weddings is the park itself. So with that not being available to them this last summer, fall, and then continuing still through winter, it's made it very difficult to kind of recoup those revenues. So I think I went too far here. Yes. So Edmonds Waterfront Center does have a nonprofit status, and they also have a proven ability to create a board, manage, and also fund programs. So Daniel, I know, did go through quite a few different programming options that they have, and I'm sure they have lots of great plans for this center. Did you want to take a minute to probably talk about some of your programming and similar to what you did last time, maybe?
Yes, I'll give some highlights. First, I'll talk about the Edmonds Waterfront Center. We'd operated as the Edmonds Senior Center for fifty-five years in the old building. And then when we opened a new building, evolved and did a DBA as the Edmonds Waterfront Center in the, in an effort to make sure that people of different ages were, felt welcome, and we provided programs for them. One of the things that is unique, I think, to the Waterfront Center is the emphasis on health access. So we have a health and wellness center that has a partnership with Bastille. We do foot care. We do, we have partnerships with a number of health providers. We have the SHIBA contract, that was something that we got. So for those of you who are not familiar with SHIBA, you probably aren't sixty-five yet, because, there you go. But SHIBA is the statewide health benefit advisor program. So we have the county contract and have thirty-five former doctors and pharmacists and nurses who are health professionals and provide free unbiased access to support in helping to navigate the Medicare system. And so we provide those services throughout the county. And then also, we do hearing and vision, blood drives, nutrition education, and I think, and an expanded foot care program. Many of those things, the reason I'm listing those are many of those things could be done. I mean, I know there's already foot care provided at the current Ballenger Center, but we could expand, and each one of our partners, health partners, are very interested when we do vaccines or do blood drives, that we could also locate those here in Mount Lake Terrace. So, and then we have two pill, other pillars of programs. One is social recreation, so we have seventy different programs we offer, and then our health and wellness. So the other thing that I think has a unique opportunity here and in Edmonds is the weekend opportunity for rentals as an opportunity to drive revenue to pay for programs. And we've had some success, and you've obviously had success here as well. And I know that that will be even more so once the park renovation is done. So I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
I could go on for a long time.
Yeah, no problem. So I, I think just to emphasize that, you know, not all the same programs we'd offer in both locations, but definitely they'd complement each other. And there's a room for a lot of improvement down at the, at the Lake Ballenger Center. I think there's plenty of good spaces to operate down there. The building itself needs some work, but, but these are things that I think there's a lot of potential in that facility, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But I think one of the other focus points of this benefits of the partnership is that there was some concern about Mount Lake Terrace revenues going to Edmonds or things like that, but Edmonds Waterfront Center has made it clear that any revenues will stay with the Lake Ballenger Center. So there's not, there's not this effort to kind of pad Edmonds Waterfront Center's bottom line by just taking a lot of money and through room rentals here in Ballenger or something like that. So I, I think that's important to know, that they're serving Mount Lake Terrace residents as well as Edmonds residents that live by, next door. It makes no sense to just try to serve Mount Lake Terrace residents when we have an aquatics center in Mount Lake Terrace. One of our major goals is to attract regional participants. We can't do it on our own in Mount Lake Terrace. There's not enough people to fill that building up without us attracting more people from the region. So it's an important point that we want to try to attract as many people as we can to the facility and make it as successful as possible. So the benefit of this partnership also is that we save city money. And I'll show you a little bit of information that we gathered on that. But a typical program we mentioned before is, it's at least five hundred thousand dollars to run something that's just part-time in the city. And so that's a very tough investment to recoup. There's a very low cost recovery with these programs for city-sponsored senior programming. From the research I did, it's more of like a twenty-five to thirty percent recovery. And in the recreation center, we're used to doing like, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent cost recovery. So another important fact on this is that currently, the city is providing that fifteen hundred dollar a month lease payment to them, where they're, they're paying a below-market rate, I should say. Fifteen hundred dollars is below commercial market rate. Well, this isn't a commercial program they're running. This is a senior program that's a community recreation program. So on top of that, the city's only investing seventy-five hundred dollars a year in a direct disbursement to the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group. So another important benefit is just this partnership with the city. It's a, it's trying to create this closeness to where we can actually work together on many things. So it's also like city delivering effective programs to the community, yes, at a cost-effective rate, but other ways we can, we can partner on facility improvements, programming, as well as some park integration. So a lot of times, we struggle with getting public input. What would a built-in public input process at the Ballenger Center when we're looking for input? So definitely very beneficial to the city. It's also a lot of times what we're looking for. We're looking for public-private partnerships, and we have one that's coming to us, one of partner with us. So I, I find it like a very good opportunity that we could look into that. It's the direction that many small and larger cities are looking to take. The Watercent, Waterfront Center also provides a lot of inclusive and diverse programming that Daniel outlined. The city, I keep hitting that button. And as mentioned, the park is, is changing. The city and also that site is positioned for a ton of long-term growth, but we do need to invest in that growth. And that's with, in people, trying to invest in programming in people. And now is a good time to ramp up and take advantage of those opportunities. There's also been quite a bit of support at the community center. I've heard from people calling me and talking to me about how they want this to go through. So there is definitely a lot of support within the senior center region and the community. The program also has to follow county standards, and we sent that to you prior to the meeting as part of the meeting materials tonight as well. But it is a prerequisite to receive county funding, which is a large portion of what everybody receives in the county. So I did put together this table, and hopefully it's viewable. And I spoke to all of these centers, some of them today, but some of them over the last few days, and actually found out a lot of information. So I did talk to the City of Everett and discussed with them their relationship with the senior center when it was city-owned and operated. So on average, their budget was about five hundred thousand dollars a year to support senior programs at the Carl Gibson Senior Center, very large building. Their membership rate's about thirty dollars a year, and they had about eleven hundred members. And they have operated that just about a few years before the pandemic. I think it's, I mean, I don't know exactly what year it is, maybe you know better, but it's been a few years now that Volunteers of America was contracted to take over that facility. And the big reason was, City of Everett didn't have money to support it, and they were looking for nonprofits to assist them and have this public-private partnership. Well, currently, the Volunteers of America are running it very successfully. They serve about forty-seven hundred seniors a year, and their membership is a little different. They have increased that rate to about forty dollars a year regular, and they do a hundred and ten dollars a year for all access, which includes a whole bunch of programming and a range of trips. They are charged a one dollar a year lease. They have a fourteen-year term, and they actually get city funding currently averaged two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year paid to them on top of that to support their programming needs. And the City of Everett has came out and said that during that time period, they are going to save five million dollars by not running that own program, even after paying them two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year on average. So after that first seven-year period, there, there's some different ideas of what's going to happen, but they're essentially, Everett's not going to have to pay Volunteers of America anymore to run that program for the last seven years, kind of wean off city funding. But they still won't have to pay a lease. The City of Lynwood has about nine hundred members, and they're about thirty-five dollars a year as well. They're all pretty similar rates, but that city-owned and operated program as well, and their budget about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year includes trips and lots of different programming. The Edmonds Waterfront Center, I know I'm outlining what you do, it's kind of awkward, but it's about four thousand members, thirty-five dollars in a year rate, and they have a one dollar a year lease agreement with the City of Edmonds and a forty-year term on that property. And they also receive support from the City of Edmonds. It was seventy-five thousand dollars a year prior to COVID, and now it's about fifty thousand dollars a year. And then we have the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group before, essentially before COVID, right? We were at two hundred or three hundred members, but a lot of annual users, and they were charging thirty-five dollars a year, and their lease cost was fifteen hundred dollars, it says a year, it's supposed to be per month, fifteen hundred dollars per month, and that term was five years, as you know. And the city does support them with seventy-five hundred dollars a year in addition. And their budget was about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year that they were able to cobble together through membership fees and the county funding them and other sources, grants. So I've skipped down to the Monroe Senior Center that I talked to today as well, and they have about eight hundred members, but they serve about twenty-five hundred seniors, thirty dollars a year member rate, and their one dollar a year lease cost, twenty-year term on that lease, and the Monroe, City of Monroe pays about fifteen thousand dollars a year, that's earmarked for transportation and pickup seniors. And their budget's about five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year. So down, the Snowmish Senior Center is about eight hundred members, they charge forty dollars a year, and they have a one dollar a year lease with the city as well for a fifty-year term. And they receive twelve thousand dollars a year from the city on top of that, and the city pays for all the utilities and maintains the ground itself. And they average about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars for their budget year two right now. So most budgets are around that dollar amount. So that's what we would expect to pay if we ran our own program, at least half a million dollars to run any sort of programming. So, and then I also highlighted potentially, if we did have an arrangement and agreement with Edmonds Waterfront Center, what that would look like. So very similar lease cost, city support, you know, a little lower, but it's still a dollar amount that is currently being budgeted and given to the seniors. And attendance numbers that could be on the rise for sure with that in partnership. I wouldn't want to estimate the membership number increase, but I would assume it'd be much more than what it has been during the pandemic. So the, the request of council, up to council, but staff recommends that you discuss it, and if you deem so, then authorize the manager to sign that lease agreement. And the recommended motion's here as well. Then we'll take any questions. Oh, real quick, I did want to say, in answer to Mr. Jeremiah's question, he had a question about the resident and non-resident rate, part of the agreement. And so that's written in there as a, it's more of a nondiscrimination piece, the way that it's written. So in that paragraph, it talks about how Edmond Senior Center should not discriminate against race, creed, et cetera. But they are allowed to charge a different rate for resident, non-resident if they wish. There's no mandate to do that. It's just allowing them so they're not, it's not discriminating against non-residents. It's just an allowable thing through recreation programming, similar to what we do at the pavilion. But I think they've already outlined what their rate would be, and it's going to be the exact same thing as Edmonds Waterfront Center. So same rate and dual membership, we could attend either center. So now we take questions.
All right. Are there any questions? Councilmember Samor?
Just two off the, the top of my head that I wanted to get out there is, what are we looking at to fix up the building? I know when former Councilman Sean was there, he got some new equipment, but I'm just wondering what the cost is to get that building up to where we want it to be for, and do we have the budget for that? And then the next question would be, during the summer months, that parking lot is going to get crazy. Will the senior center be able to block off part of that parking so it still will be accessible to seniors to get in the building? Can we add more handicap parking down there so the seniors will be able to, be able to park? Because it's, the busier that park gets, I'm afraid a lot of seniors might be pushed out if they can't have a place to park or have the handicap area.
Yeah, it's something that we could look to address. The parking law is an issue in general.
Right.
In general. And it's been on our CIP list for many, many years, and it, it needs some improvements, we understand, and it's a huge investment because of the Pete that it sits on. And so that's something we need to look at. But we have, we've, we have a contract right now with McKinstry, who's been looking at all of our facilities and, and some of the highs and lows of some of those facilities and identifying some of the improvements that we need to make. And so we expect to see that in the coming weeks. And so they'll be able to identify all those costs and ongoing maintenance, and, and it should be very illuminating. But we have identified, at the very least, we know that the roof and HVAC are in need of replacement, and the city has budgeted funds to replace those. Whether that budgeted amount is enough, we will find out soon.
So my question is, we're voting on it tonight. What if this company says you have to put new pilings in? I mean, is there going to be a cap with looking at the contract? I mean, is there going to be a cap with looking at the contract that states that the city won't have to go over a certain amount of money? Because I'm afraid if we couldn't afford it, I wouldn't want to not meet the agreement of our lease.
Well, you know, that's one thing that has been done right on that building is the pilings that you mentioned. The building hasn't settled one bit. It's everything around the building that's settling. So the walkways and, you know, when you see things like that. So those items will all be identified, and those are much easier improvements to make that we can do. But it's the structural soundness of the facility is great. There's no concern on that. We've already been reassured of that.
Oh, so the restrooms don't, we took care of that a little while ago, the restroom issues and the flooring in there. So that's, so we're just looking at, are we having to pay it for like the new refrigerator, the new stoves, the new flooring? You know, we've had issues with the flooring in there. We've had issues with moving walls. So is that all something that you're looking for the city to do right away? I know we talked a little bit about that last meeting.
Well, the structural elements will be the city's responsibility. And even like the plumbing fixtures, those are the city's responsibilities. So if there's a urinal or a toilet needs replaced, we will do that. We currently are doing that. So it's very similar to what we already are doing, and our staff are very familiar with that. And they tend to go out of their way a little more probably than the lease and try to help them as much as they can, definitely.
Yeah, because there used to be holes in the bathroom floor, you could see right down through it.
So there are some other improvements, and some of them are not structural, they're more aesthetic, that we will definitely be working with the Edmonds Waterfront Center to try to improve. So those are not as costly as some of these million-dollar improvements we're looking at.
And the parking lot, what do we have budgeted for that?
The parking lot is a whole nother issue. We don't have a current cost on that, but it will be many thousands of dollars. So it's something that, it's something that we will look at.
And then the seniors will be able to block off part of that parking just so?
We, yeah.
Because I'm afraid, you know, there's the children's play areas and different things, and, you know, people, there's a walkway right over to the new playground equipment. And if that fills up and you've got some senior events and, you know, we go down there and there's no place to park, there's really not a whole lot of room for a senior to walk that far or park on the street at all.
It's definitely something we could work with them on events. It's something that we've talked about previously when there's weddings to make sure that we're allowing some flex parking, right? So like when there's a big park event, we want to be able to use the whole parking lot. But when there's a big wedding, we want them to be able to utilize the whole parking lot as well. So I think it's something that we could easily work with them on and notify people that there's going to be a wedding and limited parking available. Those kinds of things I think are fairly easy with communication to work on.
Good deal.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to both of you for coming back and appreciate the additional background and the visual aspect that is helpful for me. So I appreciate that. I did have, I think, a couple of questions, and I wanted to make sure that I'm following because we've talked a lot about the senior center and the great work that the Edmonds Waterfront Center does and all of the good things that they've done and could do here in our community. And I think you said it yourself, Jeff, like what we have before us is a lease. It's not a partnership between us and them around programming, correct? We are not, this is not a partnership where we are entering into a partnership where we are finding a partner to put on senior programming for us. What we have before us and what we're being asked to consider is a lease agreement, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I guess, and so that changes some of my questions, because I have all sorts of like interest in like what the programs could look like and how we could facilitate them and all of the wonderful things that they could do for our community. And I mean, I think what I keep coming back to though is it is a lease. And it is a lease where we are being asked to, you know, both, you know, step away from potential revenue either we could collect directly or that could be collected directly from potentially another, you know, service provider. You know, you mentioned only $7,500 in direct costs, but I think we still have a very big question mark in terms of what indirect costs are. And do we know, I guess, do we have even ballpark like what we think that is?
As far as like our facility's maintenance costs that we currently undertake down there?
Yeah, total indirect costs for supporting that facility to ensure that we are meeting the terms of this lease agreement that's before us.
Well, I mean, some of that's going to be capital, right? And we don't know what that capital cost is yet. So that's what McKinstry's doing right now. Once we gather that, that's something we're going to present to council.
Yeah.
But it's going to be a little while still.
But we are committing to do that before we know what those costs are, correct? If we were to move forward with this.
And those are costs that we're going to undertake either way. No matter what we do, we're going to be paying those, right?
Sure. No, I understood that completely. I guess maybe question, Jeff, maybe that you have context around, I'm not sure. Since I was not here in 2013 when we made the decision to utilize, well, I guess I'm trying, and I don't, I don't know, part of me is like, well, it's a lease, and I don't want to get into all of the, but I guess part of my question is, so we are being asked to, one of the reasons that we feel like this is of value is because it provides valuable programming for our seniors, which I think is incredibly important. And I will just say that, and I will keep saying that, like I think that is incredibly important. I want to figure out how we do that. I am curious, though, why we would outsource programming for our seniors where we don't have any oversight or input into it, when we don't do that for the rest of our community members? And I guess I would love just any thoughts there.
Well, I would liken it to starting a new aquatics program if we didn't have one. I mean, we don't have the expertise if we don't currently have a program. So you're creating something from scratch, and you have those costs associated. And for us, and a lot of the city ran senior programming, the cost recovery is very, very, very low because the actual, a lot of the fees that are charged are pretty low fees as well. And there's quite a few scholarships for seniors in programming in general. So I think that's one of the reasons probably that, you know, recreation programming in Mount Lake Terrace didn't have a large senior programming, other than like fitness. And we're only filling a small little niche of that, that we're not providing a lot of all the other social connections or health type things that they provide. So there's a large amount of things that we cannot provide that we don't have space for either. You know, a lot of what we do is aimed, when the pool, we aim at a lot of the young and some of the seniors for aquatics-type events, right? So we do, we have a lot of water fitness classes that our seniors love, but we have a lot of swim lessons for the younger kids. But everything else, all the rest of our rooms are programmed for birthday parties, dance, and childcare. There's not a lot of other type programming for seniors, not a lot of space for that. And senior programming takes a lot of dedicated space. Same thing with like teen programming that we do not do very well at. There's just, teens do not want to go where there were toddlers earlier in the day, right? And it's very similar to seniors, to where you really need dedicated space for them, and it's something that we don't have.
Okay, I appreciate, yeah, I guess, I think part of my struggle is the idea that if ultimately our senior programming does not live up to our community's standards, and they have feedback and input and want to see something different, I, as a council member, am not going to be able to impact that in any meaningful way other than sharing my perspectives with, you know, the Edmonds Waterfront Center. So I know where we are now, and I guess I wish we had started this conversation sooner and started with some of the big-picture conversation about how do we support our community holistically with recreation and programming? Because I think our seniors are an incredibly important part of that. They are a growing demographic, and I would have loved to have, like, I guess, so if not this, then what? I guess I would love to know, like, so if this is not our path forward, where does that leave us?
It, you know, I mean, it's a very good question. It would be up to council to give us direction on that of what you would like to see. I mean, from my perspective, you know, I'd have to talk to the city manager, obviously, and speak at a turn here, but, you know, we definitely would have to go back out and see who was willing to utilize the facility. That's the only other thing I could think of, and it has to be a recreation purpose. The last time that we did that process, we had the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group apply and a caterer. Well, the caterer did not fit the recreation purpose. And so we started with senior programming, which was, at the time, was really what the council wanted to see in that facility. And that was the driving force, is to make sure that we were able to provide a place for the seniors to be, because they were in that small house right off 56. And so it was really a cramped space. And so that was, you know, the building was really what they needed to have space to grow, and they were growing. And so kind of just lost some momentum there.
Okay. No, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the additional information. And I will just name, I think it's a hard spot to be in as a council member where we have a proposal before us that does not feel ideal and that leaves lots of questions and where it doesn't feel like we have any alternatives to consider. And so that, I will just name that I think that is a hard, hard place to be as a council member who very much wants to ensure that we are supporting this demographic of our community. I guess maybe one more question for you. So I think in looking at those membership numbers, I think one of my biggest concerns, I mean, is the fact that Edmonds Waterfront Center has 4,000 members. We have 300. Lots of your members to, you know, the presentation itself live very close to this facility. I know you've utilized it during COVID, and that worked out very well for your members, and I'm glad that we could, we could do that. And I worry about access for our community members. I think to your comment about the pool, Jeff, like, yes, we want to attract people from all over the region, and I know each of us council members hears regularly from people here in Mount Lake Terrace who can't get into swim lessons and are frustrated that they can't access that community resource here in our own community. I guess I would love to just hear your thoughts and reassurances about how that does not end up being the case for our seniors here in Mount Lake Terrace.
Thank you. First, I'll say that we're a regional center. We've always have been from its inception in 1968. And this is part of our catchment area. And Jeff had commented that we, it's reciprocal membership. And so you can buy a membership here, pay for a membership here in Mount Lake Terrace, and receive the member benefits in Edmonds. And I will say too, that, you know, those photos, many of those photos I took last Friday, and the parking lot was full, many of those faces I see down in Edmonds. It goes back and forth. Each week they'll be back and forth. So we're committed. You're going to see the membership grow. You absolutely will see the membership grow here. It will be impacted somewhat by the continued disruption from construction. But once that's complete, we went from 1,100 to 4,000 members in about two years. And so when you build it, they really do come. And we are, will be promoting the programs here in Mount Lake Terrace. In March of this last year, we brought three of our major programs over. Our ballroom dancing, which were about 45 people, duplicate bridge, which is probably 50 or 60 people, and line dancing. And those programs are thriving here. And those are programs of Mount Lake Terrace. Those membership numbers count towards their county requirements of meeting service requirement numbers. So our goal is to make you, is to exceed your expectations and in terms of programming and exceed the community's expectations for programming. We listen. We do a lot of surveys. We are constantly listening to our members about what it is they want. And we will listen here and working in partnership with Elizabeth and her team, so.
I guess question, I guess to follow up on that to your point, though, you know, so I appreciated kind of the layout of what is required to meet, you know, the requirements of a senior center. And I guess there's no requirement, though, that those services are being provided to people here in Mount Lake Terrace, correct? So those could be programs put on here that are filled with folks from Edmonds versus Mount Lake Terrace or from other communities, correct?
Right. I guess it's just like our, in Edmonds, we get people from all over, and they're all treated the same. And so, right, in the end, it's true that the county looks at this as individuals served, unduplicated individuals served receiving programs in that site. So our goal is to recruit some local residents to be on the Mount Lake Terrace Board. And so that voice is being heard and is a part of those decision, the decision-making. And we do track, you know, where the members are from, and we have members, I can't tell you, I'm coming in here, I was thinking I should have gotten this number, of there's a number of Mount Lake, people who live in Mount Lake Terrace who are members of the Edmonds Senior Center. So it's sort of, we just sort of look at it as the same neighborhood.
Absolutely. No, I hear that. And I guess I also have a responsibility to specifically Mount Lake Terrace folks. So I'm trying, trying to make sure that I'm asking questions on their behalf. Do you have numbers that show how many Mount Lake Terrace folks are utilizing those current programs versus Edmonds residents or folks who live outside of?
Even here?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the programs that are hosted here in Mount Lake Terrace already. Do we know how many people who reside in Mount Lake Terrace are utilizing those programs versus non-residents?
That would be a question that I'd have for Elizabeth. We use the same platform, database platform, and so we have the, that information, the membership information, we know when they come, when they sign up, but we can look at their records. So we can absolutely get that. We want this to be a resource for Mount Lake Terrace.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate your willingness to answer all of those questions, and I would be very interested to know what those percentages look like currently. Thank you.
I'm looking at others. Did you want to go?
I can say a few things since I was pretty vocal at the beginning too, and it was just the fact that maybe sometimes we just check the box instead of doing the storming and norming part. But where I'm from is I had a neighbor tell me a few years ago, growing old is not for sissies. I know what she means. And there's a lot of lonely seniors out there that don't get that opportunity to meet people. So if they're from Edmonds and they're from Mount Lake Terrace, as long as they get to meet each other and have activities, I'm all for it. The other thing I'm very proud to say too is Edmonds has a fantastic reputation for their senior center. When we used to go visit Maria Cantwell, she would tell us how her mom was involved and how come, and she lived across from the lake, right? So, you know, can you have a senior center down there? And not that we don't appreciate what we already have, but being a senior, I'm not getting any younger, and how long do I have to wait for another program to get in there? You're going to hit the ground running, and I'm looking forward to taking my mother there. I am very excited about it now. I got to read the materials you gave me, and I see it as a win-win, and I see it for helping seniors, just having to take care of people who, and I always say I'm taking care of, but actually they're taking care of me because they have the senior mentality of knowing a lot more than I do. But just the fact that if we wait any longer, we'll have to rebuild in a different format that I want people to be able to benefit it from it immediately. And so I just want to say, where do I give my $35 to? Because I'm anxious to start using the senior center because I try and find activities for people who are seniors or myself, and a lot of times I can't, we're in the middle. Or, you know, dancing, you know, that's usually for people in high school or right out of high school. But now you offer dancing, and so it gives us a place to go and do that. Or the foot care is huge. Having done that, I know how important it is for people to get that foot care. And at one time you had acupuncture, and I'm hoping maybe you can get that back in. But you've really, coming here and talking to Elizabeth, and I just, I would be delighted to have you run our senior facility. So that's where I've come full circle. I've been a part of the process now. I understand it more. And looking at the other numbers, that was very fascinating to me to understand that because I'm never for gifting public funds, but I see this in a different format because you're going to bring in your own funds and you're going to benefit the people that we here have now. And then, of course, Edmonds is but up against our lake right there. And so I understand having to serve our seniors, and that's what we're going to do, and this is the program we're going to give them. And I'm wholeheartedly wanting to build that membership up and having board members like we used to. So that's my two cents in where I've, where I've come and where I am now. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor Pretam Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To help us make that possible, I move to authorize the city manager to sign the detached lease agreement between the city. We can have discussion as soon as I put the motion on stable. Or questions? Or questions, sorry. Since I'm in the middle of it now. Move to authorize the city manager to sign the detached lease agreement between the city of Edmonds, between the city and Edmonds Waterfront Center.
And now we can get?
Now we get.
Questions? Go ahead. Councilmember Woodard, oh, did you have your hand up?
I mean, if Steve, if Councilmember Woodard doesn't want to. I guess I'm curious, I was gonna say, so we did not have this on the slate to vote on tonight. So I guess I'm curious at the thought of moving forward with a vote versus a review.
It is on here to vote.
That's not how it was listed in the heading. That's not, I was gonna say, that is not the, that was not what was conveyed. So like, I recognize if you read the actual, like, you know, the memo and the bill, like, that you will see that. But I will say that I am surprised and a little disappointed that I think we did not set that up in a way where it is clear that we are voting on a lease tonight. So I will abstain if we vote.
It is listed on the agenda as a discussion item. Councilmember Murray is correct. That is listed in the bill as a potential to vote. And it is council's prerogative to decide whether to vote or to postpone to the next meeting and put it on the consent agenda.
I was just trying to move things forward.
Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
I'm not sure if we were done with your point. Okay. Yeah, no, I, I actually did think we were voting tonight. That's why I'm like, how did I end up on this side having asked this question? And I remember, because I'm a council member and I don't represent my vote or my views, I represent our city's views. So that's my way of saying, I had the opportunity this week to spend time with different folks in this field. And a comment was raised, or at least a concern was raised, that I said, I don't know that answer. And I thought for sure one of you would bring it up, because I thought it was part of the litmus test of bringing it back, which is about the actual board members. And so I just want to make sure that we ask the question, because it was brought to my attention that when we talked about it last time, we were talking conceptually, and I was on board. I thought, I know how hard it is to get board members. I know the actual risk of a board member and all that. However, we didn't get to names, which is just to say, I want to kind of freeze that and say, I guess firstly, is the Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center Board, as it's currently configured, also members of the Edmonds Center Board? If that tracks, meaning that they're on two boards at the same time, which would mean theoretically speaking, they're the same board, although you might have more people on the Edmonds Board if you track. So I guess I would have to ask that question.
Yes, the six current board members of the Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center Board are members of the Waterfront Center Board as well.
Okay. So I, I'm comfortable with that for the moment, as long as there's no interest conflict or otherwise. And I'm putting that out there for people to be thinking about. That stated, I would say then, and I thought somebody was going to bring that up, not me. It's an interesting thing here, is can you at least speak to what your action plan is to, and I'm going to use the word correct, correct that? Meaning that right now, I don't think there's actually any Mount Lake Terrace board members, because they came off of your board, who I think this, as it work out, are Edmonds residents. So you can correct me if I'm wrong there. And say, oh, no, actually, this person's Mount Lake Terrace. But nonetheless, future speaking, future tense-wise, it'd be great to hear what's the strategy to get those board members? Because Steve Woodard ain't going to be on that board. I'm already only 26, so just for the record, that's why they were over there talking, and something else was supposed to happen. But I do not have the bandwidth to be on another board. That said, I can't speak for anybody else, but it's just this general idea of giving you that opportunity, and then this group can hear it as well.
We're fully committed to making sure there's good representation of Mount Lake Terrace residents on that board. The Edmonds Waterfront Center Board is the governing body for the Edmonds Waterfront Center. And that's who would we be entering into agreement with, that you would be entering into an agreement with, is the Edmonds Waterfront Center Board. And so you have my commitment that we will make sure that there's good representation. We have one member on our Waterfront Center Board who lives in Mount Lake Terrace. So we're, we have one. But they're, they're currently not on the Mount Lake Terrace Board.
And maybe just to drive that point home, I, and apologies to Elizabeth, who's in the room, but she should already know this answer. Who hires and fires the director? Which is why we're asking, why I'm asking this question, why it stuck as a, hmm, that's interesting. It theoretically is not, well, we got one out of the six. So less than 20%. I'm not the math guy. We missed Doug. Missed you, Doug. Nonetheless, I notice doing the math, saying, okay, theoretically speaking, the board would do the hiring and the firing, correct? So I guess, so we clear that up and know who's hiring my Mount Lake Terrace director. Ergo, why I should be vested in that outcome of the board, unless I'm misunderstanding how the board plays here.
So I'm Elizabeth's direct supervisor. And the, the board, though, operates as a governing board for the entity. So they would be the group that would be, if there was a need to make a change, that would come from them. Because there's still, the Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center is still, has a 501(c)(3). And so it's a, and that's why we're getting funding from, or why you're getting funding for the county. And so that is a fully, it's a full governing body.
Thank you. And again, I just wanted, I'm good. That's what I will say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, would you bring up on your slideshow, the slide that does the comparisons with the cities, please? Thank you. Looking at this, I see a lot of cities, they have a lot of members. And I see a lot of city support with money. I do see a membership rate. And then I wanted to ask you, is it true? Did you say we do not have any active board members currently? The current Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group, they had all of their board members leave the board. So they had no board left. Okay, so there's no board?
No. So, well, we reconstituted a board. They're, they're the legal board now was constituted, reconstituted, but made up of members of the Edmonds Waterfront Center Board.
Okay. But Mount Lake Terrace really didn't have a board. The original board members kind of fell off during COVID over time, and yes.
But they, two of the board members were in place when we were working out this agreement. And so they blessed, you know, they resigned and blessed the Waterfront Center to take over management.
Okay, thank you. I know that our senior center, when I moved in the city in 1985, was in the basement of the church, and we had no support. I like the idea that we're going to have someone that can run a senior center. I do not believe in the history that we started the senior center down at the park, that it's really been successful. It's been active, but not really successful. We need someone that knows how to run a senior center. Not just have a bunch of criteria and then work on that. And then who's in charge of that? I don't know. So anyway, also mention that senior centers are going to change, because seniors are at the end of their lifespan. I'm one of them. So it's not a long membership. We're all gonna go away, because we're gonna pass away. So it's not going to be a real reoccurring stuff all the time. So I just want to let everybody know that, that senior citizens are aged, and we're going to die. So we need someone to help in that stage of life and have our center go. So that's another thing that's very important. I also looked at this, and we have a lot of cities who put in a lot of money into the senior center. We're pretty low on that scale. So I think we better look at what's going on here. Okay. I think that's all I got to say. I support the senior center and someone that knows how to run it. We've talked before. You've got good history. We need to get this thing going. I'm kind of tired of going down there and, you know, they get these weird chairs. And then next thing you know, we have to sell all the chairs. And it'd be nice to have someone that knows how to run the thing. Thank you.
Rory hasn't had a chance. So Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thanks, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Jeff, Dan, and Elizabeth, thank you for, for all of the continued work here. I think for my part, you know, I think we've had a really important conversation about, you know, sort of accountability and access for Mount Lake Terrace residents. And, you know, I think for my part, I'm, I'm mindful of sort of, you know, where we're at coming out of the pandemic and, and the opportunity here to, to partner with the Waterfront Center. It just seems like a natural fit. You know, that said, I, I do want to, you know, I do support the proposal that's in front of us, this, this lease. And, and I'm looking forward to continuing conversation about, you know, you know, how this partnership benefits Mount Lake Terrace residents, so, and seniors specifically. So, you know, I, for my part, I'll, I'll just say that I'm, you know, I'm ready to, to vote in favor for this now. And looking forward to, you know, regular conversation about, you know, how this is working out. But I, I am convinced of the goodwill and the opportunity here. And I think, you know, you know, it, it will, from what I'm seeing, benefit Mount Lake Terrace seniors in a real way. So thank you for, for continuing this conversation with us. And I'll hand it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. And thank you for allowing me. I just don't know when I'll see you again, so I just want to throw two things out there. And Councilman Ryan talked about one of them, so I just want to piggyback on that. And Lee and I talked about it right before we came into council. So one of the things that I hear a lot that seniors need, and the hospital used to offer a monthly class. And I actually attended some of those classes. And a lot of the people were very young. And sometimes they didn't offer the classes, and it was during COVID and stuff. But a death and dying class or a grieving class. And I'm sure you guys know about that. But, or, and also what they used to have in Edmonds, too, through the church, was a widows and widowers group. And I'm hoping, I'm just putting it out there, that I hope that maybe you would look into that or already know about that. But that's one of the things I've heard some of our residents say. And then my last comment is, there's three people in the audience that I adore. Lee, Victor, and Dale are all here. And maybe, possibly, they could think about being on the board. So I'm just going to throw it out there, because sometimes it's very nice to be asked. I know how much you three do for our community, so I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. So Lee's giving me the funny look, and Dale's like, what the heck? But Victor hasn't given me the eye yet. But I just, you know, you're three that are very solid community members. And I just want to throw that out there. So that's it.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I would second Councilmember Sonmore's endorsement of the folks in our audience, if you are looking for Mount Lake Terrace folks. I did have a question, though, prompted by Councilmember Woodard's thoughtful follow-up about board, and your response there, Rick. So there is a board currently for the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group, which is an independent 501(c)(3). So we are entering into an agreement with the Edmonds Waterfront Center. So I guess what is the plan? Are you maintaining the independent 501(c)(3) and their board? And I guess I'm curious, the inter, you know, connection between those two independent organizations and boards as they currently exist, if we move forward with this?
So yes, that's the plan, is to maintain the separate 501(c)(3) and separate board. And we have an operating agreement between the two organizations, which sort of foster that level of support. Because I think it's difficult for a senior center, a small senior center, to be sustainable. And just, it's, so being able to partner with a more established, larger organization. And we have in the county, regularly, we had a meeting today of senior center directors. And so we are constantly looking at shared best practices, supporting each other. We see ourselves as a network supporting seniors in Snohomish County. So we're here for the long haul.
That's actually super helpful, and I actually think reassuring in ways that I didn't have clarity and reassurance. So thank you for that. But so then Elizabeth is going to be an employee of the Edmonds Waterfront Center or of the Mount Lake Terrace 501(c)(3)?
Well, in full disclosure, you know, we're working this out. So I think at the last meeting, I had said that, you know, Elizabeth will become a member, I mean, will become an employee of. And in our last week's conversation with our finance director and the bookkeeper for, for the Mount Lake Terrace operation, they all agreed that to have separate books, separate accounting, and that it makes it a lot cleaner to have her pay go through that process. So she will be an employee of the Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center.
Great. Thank you.
But she'll have all the benefits of being an employee of the Waterfront Center in terms of training and support.
Pardon? Go ahead.
Because I think we're about to maybe call for the question. Oh, perfect. And well, you speak last, so then let me say what I have to say, then you can speak last. We actually have the honor right now of having two additional Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center folks in here. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, because they're listening to their own version of the livelihood talk. But none of us have acknowledged that they're in the room, listening to their fate. So I just wanted to acknowledge them for taking their time, energy, and spending a couple more minutes with us while we work through this process, hopefully very thoughtfully. That's how it's felt to me, and how I hope it continues. So that was what I wanted to say. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I just wanted to just answer a comment that Councilmember Murray made. For people going to, to the Edmonds Senior Center or using the Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center, I just think that the majority of the people will go to the most convenient senior, senior center, unless they have a program that they really want to access. Then they'll make the trip to a different. Maybe they'll go to the Lynnwood Senior Center, if they have something that the others don't, either don't offer or are full. Because I, and Verdon, Verdon also has some of those classes, and they're full. And, and one of those classes is slow-impact beginners yoga. Nobody who, beginning, wants to go in and do two and a half hours of extensive yoga. I'm just putting faith into this, hoping that the, the new board, we have a board with one Mount Lake Terrace member on it, that the board will expand and/or have some people leave and have new members come in. The new members are going to be Mount Lake Terrace residents. So they'll know the needs of what their neighbors want. And then we'll have, hopefully longevity, and hopefully Elizabeth will stay. And there's just a lot of things that I'm just hoping will happen. And it's never going to happen if we don't let it happen. And so even though I have a lot of reservations still, I think that I'm just, you know, going to have to, to just have faith and just, hopefully it will happen. All right. So we have a motion on the table. right. So, we have a motion on the table, and then we've had our discussion, so we're ready to vote. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do I need to say? Do you want to be on the record as? One abstention?
Yes, please, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so that's six, four, and one abstention, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, we're going to take a, well, three-minute break. Thank you very much.
Recording stopped.
Hopefully, the next one will only be three minutes more.
All right. We're back. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so next on our menu, next on our agenda is the review and vote on the Snohomish County Public Utilities District Inner Urban Trail easement, again, with our Recreation and Parks Director, Jeff Betts.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilmembers. I am going to be quick on this one, I promise. So, as mentioned, we are going to review, and if you would like to, vote on the easement for the inner urban trail with Snohomish County Public Utility District. So, I'm very excited to present this to you tonight, and I could tell you why. I have been working on this for at least three years. So, this is a culmination of three years of work between Snohomish County PUD and the City of Mount Lake Terrace. So, both entities are very excited to push this through, hopefully, if council deems it. So, the agenda for tonight's meeting, we are going to talk a little bit about the background, again, and some location, if everybody knows where the inner urban trail is, the easement itself, the timeline, the request of council, as well as any discussion and questions. So, the inner urban trail, it actually started as the first light rail, right? So, the inner urban trolley was on, from Seattle to Everett, and actually, it traveled all the way up to Bellingham one time. Seattle to Bellingham, think of it, back then, 1910 through 1939. And the city took, actually undertook some studies with other jurisdictions. We partnered with the county, with Everett, and Linwood, and Edmonds as well, to take a look at what we could do with that area, with where the inner urban trail now resides. So, part of those studies called for an establishment of this pedestrian pathway. And we actually put together some grant applications. When I say "we," I mean the city. I wasn't here then. But it was for $241,920 in state grants that helped us construct that trail. And we also provided a little over $1.2 million in local funds. So, in 1997, the city entered in a 25-year easement between the city and PUD, and that actually expired January 2022. So, we are in, I guess technically what you would say is like a holdover period, where the city is still responsible, where we take responsibility for the same things that we were responsible for in the easement. And that's really just to provide that service and risk management of that area in general. So, that easement between the PUD and the city was for 25 total feet, and this is 12 and a half feet on each side of the center line of the trail. And I'm going to show you something that hopefully clarifies that, if everybody has a question about it. But that's the agreement that expired, was 25 feet total, running the length of the trail. Okay? And that was for a $1 a year cost. And then later on, after that initial agreement, the city added some missing links to that trail in 2008 and 2012. And you could see, most of those additions are down by Lakeview Drive and 228th. Basically, where there's a PUD substation, you could see where it kind of jogs around that PUD substation. It used to have to go all the way around on the street through there. So, the inner urban trail really is, it really is such a community amenity, and so many people love to utilize it. I hear all the time from Primera, Blue Cross employees, who love to walk it during the day. If you drive by at lunchtime, you'll see dozens of people walking up and down the trail. So, highly used, great for commuting, a lot of commuters utilize it, avid bikers utilize it also for recreation. It is on the west side of Mount Lake Terrace, and it is PUD property. It runs north and south, from 228th Street Southwest or Lakeview Drive, to 212th Street Southwest, where it meets Linwood. So, the inner urban trail along Ballenger Park is actually Edmonds Inner Urban Trail. That's not Mount Lake Terrace's. Our starts just north of the park. So, Mount Lake Terrace's is 1.6 miles in length, and it's a little under 12 miles total in Snohomish County. So, the new easement agreement, this is for 10 feet on each side of the center line. So, the area of our responsibility has gotten a little bit smaller, or 20 feet total. So, you can see in this illustration, and this is not precise, this is me putting lines on a picture, and I used, I actually measured on Google Earth, but it's just me trying to represent this to you. The inner urban trail itself, the center line of the asphalt, 10 feet on each side of that center line, would be what we are responsible for. So, 20-foot width, along the entire trail. So, once again, it'd be a dollar a year. There is no cost to the city for this easement, and it's, again, a 25-year agreement. PUD would maintain outside of that trail easement, and the city, once again, just maintains that 20-foot trail easement. The one addition and change from previous, the biggest one, is that anything outside of that area, really just anything at all, that's outside of that 20-foot width, if there's any illegal dumping or encampments, anything of that nature at all, that would require a major cleanup or an intervention by city staff to potentially call the police, or bring public works crews down, parks crews, those kinds of things, that would be split 50-50 between PUD and the city. So, that is a little bit different than before. So, that was the long and short of that easement agreement. There is a...
We have a question here.
Okay. Yes.
Sorry, you can't phrase it that way and expect me to know that. So, what was it before? I'll go Johnny Carson on you. You said 50-50 wasn't how it was before. Were we 100% before? Were we not involved? Like, what was it before?
Before, I believe it was 100% PUD's responsibility. So, that was something that we discussed for a very long time, that they wanted us to take some responsibility for any of those kinds of things that happen outside of the trail.
Go ahead.
Which must beg the question, do we have a ballpark figure of how much they were paying, that they decided they can't afford to, I guess what the question is, afford to pay 100%?
No, I don't think it's that they couldn't afford it, but I think that there's certain areas. This is the same language they're using for the entire trail.
Oh, thank you.
So, there's other areas in the county and Everett, that there's a lot more of an impact to them. Mount Lake Terrace's, as of right now, the impact is much lower. So, we currently do not have this as an issue, but it could be a future issue that we don't know about. So, we wanted to approach it in that 25-year span as a potential future issue, and not have us pay 100% of those costs, but potentially just doing a 50-50 split.
Okay. Yeah, and I was comfortable with their aligning the other contracts as well. So, I appreciate the background, though.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks, Jeff. I think I'll, before I get, go down a rabbit hole, wanted to say, I think this easement agreement makes good sense, but you'll not be surprised, especially given your mention of the trail's history, that, you know, I'm interested in raising awareness about an effort to address some other sort of existing, missing links. Think, you know, this is, you know, the community amenity you described it as, and will, I think, will only be, will be receiving more use as we see light rail open and, you know, more development in South County. But wanted to raise awareness around an effort in community between Shoreline Edmonds and including some Mount Lake Terrace residents, to find some money to study and plan for a pedestrian bicycle bridge over the county line, that is Edmunds Way or SR 104. And, you know, I won't go too much farther there, but I think, you know, this is, this agreement makes sense, and I think there's also sort of an immediate opportunity, as we see growth, to make sure that the trail is as connected as it can be to our neighbors, and that it is really a pedestrian and bike highway that really has potential to be in a more robust way. So, thank you for the sidetrack, and fully supportive of the agreement you've negotiated here. Glad it's wrapping up.
Thank you. What? Oh, Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. To clarify this picture, could you tell us exactly where that is? Thanks.
I knew somebody would ask me that, the street crossing. I believe this is 216th. If the Public Works Director was here, he'd tell me. So, this is right by Whirlwind, I believe. I think this, if you take a right, Whirlwind's right there on your left. You know Whirlwind, the business right there? That does, yeah.
Oh, it's on the other side of your mirror?
Yes.
So, does the trail go to, go in two directions?
So, this is where, yes. So, the trail continues to go straight where the inner urban trail label is, across the street. But there's another access point that heads kind of a little bit to the north there more, that little spur that's right here, if I can get a mouse here. And so, that's just really to give you access to go this, go west, if you would like, instead of having to continue this way, then go west. So...
All right. Thank you.
Jeff, on the other side...
We have to turn it on.
...of the trail by the casino, is that part of it too? Because we used to go paint the graffiti off of there, and that's within like 20 feet. Is that, wouldn't it be something that would be reported, that we would have to do, right? Is that part of the trail there?
So, the west of the tunnel, do you mean west of 220th?
Yes, yes.
Yes. So, the tunnel's something that we repaint frequently.
Okay.
And so, we stay on top of that. There's probably 5,000 layers of paint on that tunnel. So, but directly to the west of that, there are huge retaining walls.
Tainting wall, yeah.
And those are private property, so they would not be our responsibility. So, that was the former Fontasia, right, complex? Yeah. So, those are areas that it's private property responsibility. So, if you remember, like, 10, 12 years ago, we made a huge push to, I think, police worked for the private property owners to repaint those walls. So, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, I just had a...
I'm finished. I just left the request of council up here that I could read if you'd like, or you can do as you wish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to authorize the city managers to sign the attached easement agreement between the city and Snohomish County Public Utility District.
Second. So, has it moved and seconded? Do we need to have a discussion before we vote? All right. So, I'm going to call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, we don't have a city manager, but we do have an assistant city manager for the city manager's report, if you have one.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Jeff couldn't be here with us tonight. So, I wanted to give you a couple of updates. One, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission has been working on regional partnerships with various cities and agencies in the South County area that are working on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so, we have outside tonight a couple of posters about Black History Month and Lunar New Year with some of our partners' programs for this month. And I just wanted to highlight a couple for you. One, on February 10th, we have a jam-packed day, starting at the Mount Lake Terrace Library, with the Lunar New Year celebration from 11 to 12. And then from 12 through about 9 o'clock at night or later, in Edmonds, the Multicultural Center is putting on, Multicultural Association of Edmonds is putting on a whole day of activities, starting at the Arts Center, and then going down to Civic Field and back again. So, there'll be performances, a fair, and all sorts of activities to attend for Lunar New Year. Also, for Black History Month, the Mount Lake Terrace Library is hosting a Humanities Washington Speaker, Professor Luther Adams, will be presenting on a Space for Black History on February 17th from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. So, proud to help spread the word about those. Also, we wanted to acknowledge that our SWAT team here in Mount Lake Terrace, Sergeant Matt Porter leads a regional organization called the North Sound Metro SWAT Team, and they helped fulfill a wish for a young boy, a seven-year-old boy, who lives near Woodenville, who has cancer and has always wanted to be a SWAT team member. And so, the team went to visit him, and that's, you know, cities from all around the region who participate on that. So, just want to give them a shout-out for their good work on that. And if you, just wanted you to know that this building has been open for 18 months now. And so, happy 18-month anniversary. And lastly, we are working on some wildfire smoke training for staff. There's new state legislation to protect outdoor workers from wildfire smoke. So, we're getting in compliance with that, and provided supervisors with some training this week. We'll be working on a plan with them, and then rolling out training for the rest of staff soon thereafter. And happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions of the assistant city manager? Okay. I guess not. Thank you. Next is the council liaison reports. And where shall I start? Why don't we start with Councilmember Ryan? You hardly ever go first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm honored. On Tuesday, January 9th, I attended our Lefone Retirement Board. And then on the 16th of Tuesday, I attended the Arts Advisory Commission. Nothing new to report. On the 18th, I attended the Snohomish County Cities and Towns election of local officials, and would like to congratulate our own Mayor Protem for being on some, he actually got on like two, three boards. So, you did a really good job. I appreciate that. I don't have it in front of me, what you are, but you can tell everybody. And then, on the 25th, we have had our work-study session, and that's it. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Laura Son, Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. I also attended the...
I also attended the council meetings and the workshop, but really quickly for my boards, we had two LTAC meetings, one on January 10th and one on the 30th. There won't be any surprises, and you'll be getting that information to vote on here soon. Also had my monthly city manager report on January 16th and left one, and the parks are coming up next week. And I know we have to have a meeting for the Finance Committee. I know the city manager put something out there, so we'll be following up on that. And that's all I have to report.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's been a while, and I will try to be brief, which we know I'm not always great at. So back on January 5th, I attended City Club's Legislative Preview, and I just wanted to highlight that because I thought it was a good reminder of, they have a kind of a theme around dialogue across differences, and they hosted a Democrat and Republican from the Senate and an Democrat and Republican from the House, and talked about really kind of nuanced legislation proposals that are, that are down in Olympia this year. And I, I learned a lot, and I thought it was just a good reminder of the value of taking time to listen to one another. On the 10th, my, my day job at the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, we host an annual regional leadership conference, but they have extended that out to regular kind of connected events this year. And they did one on placemaking, and I bring it up here just because I thought it was a really important, it was prompted by the Surgeon General. So Dr. Murthy had released essentially a call to all of us around the crisis of loneliness and isolation and connection in our community, and, and that it is a public health crisis. And so, you know, we had an opportunity to hear from folks, including Dr. Josephine Young from Primera, you know, who's their medical, one of their medical directors. But talk about, you know, the different ways that community and placemaking shows up. And I think, you know, that is in both the creation of public spaces where community can come together, you know, public-private partnerships and, and, you know, nurturing those, shared goals, et cetera. Anyway, it was a good conversation, and I think it is an important reminder for us as we engage in our comprehensive planning process, the important role that placemaking plays in that. And I think the importance of that particularly at this moment in time when people are feeling less connected than ever, and it is really at a crisis level in our communities. On the 11th, I spent half a day judging our DECA regional competition at the Linwood Event Center. And I mention that both because I, I know Councilmember Sam Moore and I both served as leaders in high school of our DECA chapters, and it, they do, it's a great organization, it's a 501(c)(3) that prepares emerging leaders in high school and college for, for leadership opportunities, but also wanted to give a shout out to our Mount Lake Terrace team who, who came through, and I got to see them do their thing, and they did an amazing job. Let's see. Had my monthly city manager meeting. On the 15th, I spent Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day down at my own high school, Garfield High School in Seattle, and participated in their Mount Lake Terrace, or their Martin Luther King Day Opportunity Fair. So they hosted a resource room, so I got to get together with some of my HR colleagues, and we helped, you know, provide resume review and interview tips, and it was a great way to spend the day in service. Also attended Snohomish County Cities. The only thing I will add to Councilmember Ryan's report was that he had an Oscar moment where he was, he was sharing all of the wonderful things that Mayor Pro Tem brings to the table, and he was played offstage. He, he, he had a long, he had a long list. So anyway, I would second congratulations to, to Mayor Pro Tem for all of his continued work and also appreciation for the many different places that he shows up representing not only Mount Lake Terrace, but, but Snohomish County as a whole. Our DEIC had a, their strategic plan discovery process. So on the 20th, we spent almost a full day here at City Hall connecting with our strategic planning leaders. And I would just, I think it was a really good foundational body of work, and just commend all of the commissioners for their willingness to engage in that work. And Deputy City Manager Hope for all of her support in, in helping to ensure that, that that came to fruition and that that process is moving forward, and I'm excited as they continue to have those conversations with each of us as council members and the commission continues in their work. And then we had our work session, and then last weekend had a chance to go to the Edmund School District cultural-wide, or district-wide cultural fair, which was a really great opportunity to, again, just learn more about all of the amazing cultures that, that folks in our community come from, and, and they shared some of that with us, which was wonderful. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Well, thank you, Mayor. In addition to all the, the last few work sessions and, and meetings we've had, the beginning of January, I attended my last, or at least last for, for now, Seashore Transportation Forum. And unfortunately, the following week, I missed the Ballenger Forum meeting, but due to an unforeseen medical event, but promised to, to be back there, and I'm looking forward to that. I also attended the Sound Cities, or excuse me, Snohomish County Cities Dinner, rather, and got to witness the, the glory of, of Councilmember Ryan's stage presence. And on the 20th of January, I got to volunteer with the Ivy League Veterans Park Cleanup Crew and pulled some invasive species and had a good time out in community with them. And then on the 24th, I also attended the, or my, my first meeting of the Alliance for Housing Affordability in Snohomish County. Really looking forward to participating in, in that group more. And I'll, I'll just close by saying I'm, I'm sorry I'm not there with you, but I'm looking forward to, to seeing you all down here in Olympia in my, my sort of day-to-day during legislative session this, this coming week for AWC Hill Day, if you will. So I'll see you all then and hand it back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. You can try to play me off, but it's not going to happen, the music. I realize we're going to have to vote in a couple minutes here. So, that said, let me start by saying, first and foremost, I just peeked at my phone. We're not supposed to do that from the council, but I just want to acknowledge, I've got 75 text messages, which is the context I want to say thank you to family, friends, mentors, who took time out today to come and celebrate this next piece, which is I had the honor of being selected as Linwood Times Person of the Year. I actually want to pause and say thank you very much. I thought I was going to get to say that to them tonight, so wanted to at least pause and say thank you to Linwood Times, your editorial staff, your board, and whoever else was involved in that decision. Really wonderful article, and the reason that I started off talking about the text messages is not to discount those who were here in the room as well. You saw that my family was here, I had some mentors here, but just wanted to say for them to all know that in that article, we covered a lot of ground, but the thing that we didn't get in there, that I did share, was just my thanks and gratitude to the mentors. As much as it's cool to be the one signaled, singled out as the Person of the Year, I think everybody in this room would know I'm all community and very much aware that I can't do what I do unless there's a lot of support around me, and that includes all of you as well. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that it might have been an award for Dr. Woodard, but it felt like a reflection of our relationships. So thank you all for being here for that. Now let me power through and say, well, they honored me for my civic engagement, my long-term volunteerism, our council meetings, da-da-da-da, and let me demonstrate what that looks like here with my report. On the 6th, I had the opportunity to participate in Linwood's e-cycle program. Didn't see that coming, did you? I only bring that up to say that I would love to see us be able to do some version of that. I don't know what all that involves. They have a different system than us, but we do have a transfer station, and we used to do stuff like this. We were a little more buckwhealing back then. We would just say, hey, put anything you want on this day out on the street. Not suggesting we go that direction again, although that was a lot of fun, because you could go around garage sailing for free. But nonetheless, just seriously saying that, you know, there was a lot of e-cycle that needed to go from Mount Lake Terrace, and it'd be wonderful for us to put it, put it on for ourselves. But thank you, Linwood, for not checking people's IDs to see who was bringing what. Moving on, I did make it to my last as a member, though I'll be a alternate, the Lake Ballenger McIlure Creek Forum. I don't think they changed their name, but nonetheless, it was an honor to work with you all for these last almost solid five years, and definitely honored to serve as your chair for the last three solid years, if not four. And I look forward to returning to you all as a alternate. Then on the 11th, we had our study session, and I'd only point that out to say that was my birthday, and you all didn't even say happy birthday. No, you did. I'm teasing. Thank you all. That was wonderful to be here on our study session. I know we've all given up something on a Thursday, so just want to remind us all, yes, those people out there supporting us matter, and they miss us on some of those important days, but it's for the right reasons. That said, and probably the busiest and most important of the entire work here this past month for me, is between the 14th and 15th, I had the honor of putting on or being a part of, in some capacity, five very large community events honoring the Reverend, the Honorable Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the beloved community, as well as Weekend of Service and Day of Service. If you attended any of those in person or virtually, thank you so much. It was a lot of work going into all of those, but all of it was more than worth it, especially on the 16th, when we could look over our shoulders and go, woo, we made it. On the 18th, I only bring that up to say I did not join you all in Everett, and I do apologize for that. And if we're going to cancel our Thursdays, or at least shift our Thursday study sessions when they have these meetings, we should be there, and I wasn't. I had a pretty decent reason, and I hope you agree with me on that one. Article talks about it a little bit, which is that we had our cold weather shelter opening that night, and you wouldn't know this, but I am pretty tied into the blankets, which is pretty significant to the cold weather shelter. So I needed to pivot and make sure they had the blankets, because there's nothing worse than a warm building and nothing but people standing around. So I wasn't able to join you all, but I was with you in thought, and congratulations to Mayor Pro Tem for making a run at the table. I think we're going to be very well represented at that level, so thank you for stepping up to that. On the 20th, I did not join Ivy League. Thank you for mentioning Ivy League, but I am a proud member. I was just too tired, everybody. Then on the 21st, just because I want to say, ooh, look at me, not really, I just want to drive this point home, was able to donate my ninth gallon of blood. My ninth gallon, yes, ninth gallon, not that many. In fact, I want you to know that we had a public comment earlier from Lee. Lee is on the 100-unit board, and she's way beyond that. So just kind of putting out there that there's always a need for blood donations. I would love for somebody in Mount Lake Terrace, and that's not me, to organize a blood drive. I know we've done that in the past, just want to put that out there, especially at the beginning of the year, people are festive and not thinking about all the intricacies of life. Thank you to Councilmember Ryan for pointing out that we're all heading towards the same destination, but without those blood donations, some of us get there a lot sooner than we were supposed to. So on the 23rd, I went through the Narcan Training, and I only bring that up to say I would love for this city, if we aren't already in that capacity, thinking about how we make sure all of our city staff are trained. Honored to say I'm helping to bring Narcon Training to all 800-plus VOAWW employees, because we are right there, out there in the city with you all, and we see it all the time. And I actually brought up one time where we were at the food bank and we watched a young man fall out in front of us. And I realized that, other than can I help, I did not have a next step. Now I do with the Narcan Training. So just putting that out there, the Snohomish Health District, or Health Department could be a big help in that direction. And then last two ones here on the 27th, I actually saw Councilmember Murray there, which is the Edmund School District. Congratulations, put on their second annual diversity fair. I thought it was awesome. I bring that up because our DEIC was very strongly represented. I think every one of them made a shift, a priority, and made that happen. So it was just wonderful to see them all there. And then last but not least, sticking with the Edmund School District, I had an opportunity to join them on the 29th and just say that they, the Edmund School District nurses, so all of the nurses in the Edmund School District were in our facility. And we were there, VOA, and I invited myself to do an introduction as a council member just to make sure that they, one, realized how important open spaces are to mental health and all the work that we are doing down there. And then, two, I cheated in this one and just pointed out the, the power of volunteerism, which is to tie it back up to that Person of the Year. You don't do these types of things for awards. You do it because it's a connection to humanity. And when you're not your full self, there's nothing better than serving someone else to eventually find yourself in that process. So between those two, I couldn't miss an opportunity to just come down and welcome them to, to Mount Lake Terrace, but specifically let them know, to let their people know that this area, that lake and the park is really growing, as you all know, because we've made some wonderful decisions as we have done tonight to make sure that we continue to grow that area. I was trying to do the play me off, but nobody did it, so I'll do it. So I play myself off. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 11th, had the work session. On the 18th, while I was not there, but I do appreciate all of your support and Councilmember Ryan stepping in to help me get elected to the Snohomish County Cities Executive Board, representing the, representing Snohomish County Cities on the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board and as the alternate on the Growth Management Policy Board. The 24th, I was at the Snohomish County, had Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee meeting, where we talked about the Housing and Behavioral Health Capital Fund Investment Plan, where we're putting funds into affordable housing, emergency housing, preservation, behavioral health facilities and services, totally $130 million over the next five years. And we also talked about the energy and sustainability funding of, basically, there's $4.6 billion available out there for, there's competitive funds, federal funds that are available, and our region is working together to obtain those funds and potential for funding available to implement strategies, or there's a potential of having funds available to address various climate strategies, sustainability strategies for '25 and '26. So we can work with the county on, on those efforts and anything we have, ideas we have for getting some help there. On the 25th, had the Puget Sound Regional Council Operations Committee, where we talked about the operations of the Puget Sound Regional Council, and followed by the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board meeting, where we approved the Equity Pilot Funding Project, which, and, and then followed by approving the policy framework for federal funds, which is, has a focus on safety, safe system use, safe, this is important for us for obtaining future grants, by the way. There's a focus on safety, climate, and equity. So on, on safety, we need to be looking at safe system, safe, safe systems utilizing proven countermeasures to help ensure safety on our road. So we can, the more we focus on that, the better chances we have of obtaining competitive funding for, for that. On equity, it's, it's a focus on color, income, disabilities, age, young and old, English is a second language, and looking at expanding access to jobs and reducing commute time, things like reducing commute time, expanding access to jobs, helping, helping those folks in, in the focused areas, getting, getting to and from their job, also looking at equitable engagement and outreach. So for instance, all the time and effort we put into outreach for our comprehensive plan, those efforts can be, help be funded through some of these programs, federal funds that are available through PSRC. So looking at outreach programs and then anti-displacement measures. So a lot of, so when we start talking about anti-displacement during the comprehensive planning process and what our plans are, there are funds available for that, and the more we include those, those three areas, focused areas, the better chance we have of obtaining those funds from PSRC grants. All right. So with that, we also had an update on the Equity Advisory Committee. Again, I highly encourage us to reach out to Charles Patton from the Director of the Puget Sound Regional Council Equity Group and, and what they've done. They've done a model job, got a lot of great data, a lot of great information for us to be able to utilize and bring back and, and help implement ideas here at the local level. On the 25th, met with Eric Ashley of the Sound Transit. I'm pleased to report, and they're excited to come back and, and present to us again. By the way, they're anxious to, to share their progress and where we're at, but we are looking at it, and based on the, the new updated schedule, getting there on time. We are looking at providing service in the late summer, early fall at this point, and so that's right around the corner for us, very exciting times. And that, I guess, I guess earlier today, we had the meeting with the mayor and I with the city manager, and that concludes my report. We can finally...
We can finally be close to going home.
Do we have...do we have to extend five minutes, or?
Yeah, right?
Okay. So, for my report, on the 5th of January, I attended the Seashore Transportation Forum meeting. And then, on the 22nd, I attended the Snohomish County Mayor's meeting. On 24th, I attended the Affordable Housing Alliance meeting, and what we did was we added two more cities to our group, and that is Monroe and Darrington. And on the 30th, I met with the Congresswoman Del Binney staff with our...with Jake Johnson, our federal lobbyist, and our city manager. And on...and that evening, I went to the Mount Lake Terrace Brier Chamber after hours, where our guest speaker was our city manager, Jeff Dyson. And then, earlier today, I attended the Community Transit Board Meeting. And for somebody who's interested in the zip cars, it looked like there's going to be two areas in Everett that's going to have that, and then eventually it'll just completely spread out, hopefully, to more places. And that's the end of my report, so now we can...we've made it to 10. And anyone...anyone have anything else to say? Because I am now...oh, new business. Does anyone have any new business? So, that...did Rory have his hand up?
No, Mayor, he's waving goodnight.
Okay. So, the next item on my agenda is adjournment. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.